Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the March 7, 2022, regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meetings of March 7, 2022.
Second.
Call or roll. Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Milani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecov.
Aye.
Proclamation honoring Kendall Coyne Schofield.
So first I'm going to read the proclamation and then I'll let all the board members comment if they so choose and then I have some comments and then Kendall you're going to get to come up and get the proclamation and get more pictures. Village Orland Park proclamation, a proclamation honoring Kendall Coyne Schofield. Kendall Coyne Schofield is a three-time Olympian who with Team USA has brought home three Olympic medals, one gold and two silver. This year she was named team captain of the USA Women's Hockey Team and whereas Kendall's hockey career started at the Arctic Ice Arena here in Orland Park, she went to Carl Sandberg High School and at 15 she received her first call from USA Hockey. At 18 she was asked to try out for the US Olympic Team. In 2014 she earned her way to her first of three Winter Olympics. And whereas Kendall earned her bachelor's and master's degree at Northeastern University, her senior year she was named Hockey East Player of the Year and a First Team All-American. She led the NCAA in goals, goals per game, points per game, shorthanded goals and hat tricks. She was awarded the Patty Kasmaier Award as the top female college ice hockey player in the United States along with the impressive list of awards while earning a GPA of 4.0. And whereas the three words that motivate Kendall are follow your dreams, at 29 the list of her accomplishments is ever-growing. Those three words have led her to the US Women's National Team, the International Ice Hockey Federation World Championship, six-time world champion, 12 nations invitational tournament series and among other, the Four Nations Cup, six times gold medalist. Her hockey career is filled with championships and medals. Whereas Kendall is so much more, she is a coach, a mentor, the first woman to work for the Chicago Blackhawks as a player development coach and a youth hockey growth specialist. She is a co-owner of a women's professional soccer team, she is a board member of the Professional Women's Hockey Players Association and she is now also an author. And whereas today we celebrate Kendall for her part in bringing home the silver medal from the 2022 Winter Olympics, but as you see Kendall is so much more, she is successfully following her dreams, is an exceptional role model and an inspiration to every young athlete in our community. And now therefore I Keith Pecov, village president of the village of Orland Park, Illinois and the counties of Cook and Will do hereby extend the gratitude of the entire community to Kendall Coyne Schofield and hereby proclaim Monday, March 21, 2022, as Kendall Coyne Schofield Day in the Village of Orland Park. Any board members wish to comment?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
Kendall Coyne is one of the sweetest people you'd ever want to meet despite, you know, as a, one of the best athletes on my block, I know the pressure of champion.
She is or you are.
No, she, no, no, no. But she's, she's rose to the occasion. I just read her book over the weekend and I wish I would tell everybody too because it's good, it's an easy read, it's a good read and there's some points to it. But Kendall, what you're doing on a national scale for women's rights and for hockey is unbelievable. I hope, I hope the book can, you know, that it's conveyed that how much you are doing that's going to affect the whole US as well as part of the world with your, your efforts. You couldn't ask for a nicer person to represent Orland Park or a better representative. So thank you for, for all your service you do for the community. Thanks.
Trustee Reardon.
As a huge sports fan, a father of three girls, I don't know you, I've never met you, but I've read just about everything that's in the proclamation and all of your highlights, your husband's as well, I've, I've seen him play a number of times. I don't know if it's possible, but it seems to me that there's so much more, that you're a better person off the ice than on it, even with all these accomplishments. So thank you for everything you're doing, you're an inspiration and congratulations.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
Kendall, I just wanted to say thank you for everything you've done, being a woman, a person that grew up in Orland Park and showing other little girls they can be like you in some fashion or form. So thank you so very much and hats off to your father and mother who probably took you to all those ice skating rinks and games when you were younger so they too made a big commitment in your success and thank Mr. Coyne for that as well. But thank you for everything you're doing and have done. Thank you.
Any other comments? Kendall, you know, your parents must be so proud and, you know, quite a challenge as trustee Katsinas said to bring you to all those places and I know they're very proud of everything you do. Your accomplishments are amazing. I had the pleasure of meeting you four years ago after you won the gold medal and it was at our alma mater Carl Sandberg High School. While others may not know, they probably do now if they listen to the proclamation, you've also won six, six gold medals in the World Championships as well. As someone who's followed hockey my whole life, I know how important captains are in hockey, more important than in any other sport. Kendall is the captain of the US Women's Hockey Team. That speaks more than any other accomplishment that we have listed, that you were chosen to lead the best that America has to offer. As I said, I'm a huge hockey fan, particularly a United States hockey fan. Like many of us that are as old as I am, I will never forget the 1980 US Olympics. And testing some history here, what this particular sweater is from 2002, which is the Salt Lake City Olympics, which I was actually able to see and I was actually able to see the US Women's Team play Canada in the gold medal game. Unfortunately, the outcome was the same as this year, but it's still an incredible achievement and we are very, very proud. I know your parents, your family and your friends are proud, so is all of Orland Park. Congratulations.
Well, first off, thank you so much for the kind words, for the proclamation, for highlighting some of the accomplishments, but then also for the words of, you know, for everything that I've done off the ice, I think that will always be more important than anything that's done on the ice. But I think most importantly, there really is no place like home and like you guys said, without formerly known as the Orland Park Ice Arena, now known as the Arctic Ice Arena, this, this dream, this journey would have never began. And my dad stumbled upon that rink, it was a little outdoor hut and signed his daughter up for figure skating and what turned out. But the support that I've received, you know, before the Olympics, throughout my career from everybody here back home has just been unbelievable. I heard from a lot of you while I was in Beijing, there were so many posts that were coming my way and it's felt, it's received, it's seen. And the more that you guys all continue to support, you know, the, some of the athletes and, and others that come out of Orland Park in this area only inspires the next generation to say that I can do it too. I saw her, I saw him and I can be them one day and I can be better than them one day. And there's a reason that Michael and I call Orland Park home and our future home will always be Orland Park. And we're so proud to be from here, to live here, to train here, to work here and to be a part of this, this community and this family. So thank you everyone for all the support.
Thanks again Kendall.
Proclamation honoring Chief Joseph Mitchell.
Hold on one second while I get it up. So again, I'll read the proclamation first and then let the board comment. From the Office of the Mayor, proclamation, whereas Chief Joseph Mitchell was appointed to the, as the village of Orland Park's Chief of Police in 2020 and whereas during his 27 year career in law enforcement, Chief Mitchell rose through the ranks, taking on public safety roles as patrol officer, investigator, sergeant, lieutenant, commander, deputy chief of police and the village of Orland Park's Chief of Police for the past two years. Whereas through the state-of-the-art technology and training efforts, Chief Mitchell continued to reduce crime village-wide and whereas under the chief's leadership, the police department has engaged in a more collaborative approach to village-wide initiatives such as addressing mental illness through the continuation of the department's nationally-recognized crisis intervention team focusing on response to mental health-related incidents. And whereas Chief Mitchell supervised the implementation of the partnership with Trinity Services to provide immediate and appropriate mental health services to those in need. And he also served for a time as the village of Orland Park as the interim assistant village manager. And whereas Chief Mitchell's efforts also include, include increased community engagement efforts, whereas Chief Mitchell and the Orland Park Police Department are actively involved with the law enforcement torch run and fundraising for the Illinois Special Olympics. And whereas the Orland Park Police Department welcomed the village's first therapy dog to assist in providing comfort to those in need during difficult times. And whereas Chief Mitchell has faithfully and diligently served the village as its chief of police by providing steadfast, dependable leadership to the men and women of the Orland Park Police Department throughout his entire tenure. Now therefore I Keith Pecov, mayor of the village of Orland Park, Illinois and recognition of Chief Joseph Mitchell's retirement from the Orland Park Police Department, recognize him for his 27 years of service. Congratulations Chief. I'll open it up to the board for comments.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
Joe, thank you. While your tenure as chief may feel brief to those that do not truly know you, in full, you have been a steadfast leader throughout your long and distinguished career here in the village. I know this not only from my own observations, but also from many of the conversations that I've had with the women and men of your department. Common refrains I've heard when they describe you include, Joe is the smartest guy I know. Many of them remark that they modeled their career path based on your example. And universally, they all talk about the care that you express for each and every one of them. Joe, I know you to be a consummate professional of unwavering integrity. You consistently do what is right for the village and no one knows, that knows you can doubt your deep commitment to this village. Your compassion shines through when you so strongly advocate for victims, for your officers and for the safety of our residents. I've been privileged to have the opportunity to learn more about the department and policing through our conversations. I can't think of a time previous where I've disagreed with your perspective on much of anything, but I'm going to do so now. We once discussed tenure and legacy in an organization, in general, not about anyone specific, and at that time I agreed that the day-to-day routine and need to move ahead can erode at an individual's legacy. There's a lot of truth in the reality that we can, that we're all replaceable in our acting roles and perhaps no one knows that better than elected trustees, we get reminded of that quite often. Looking back on that conversation, I cannot help but think that you were modestly attempting to foreshadow what would happen with your legacy. And in this, for what I believe is the first time in a while, if not ever, I disagree with you. Joe, you have left your mark on this department and on this village. During your 27 years, you led the way in modernizing policing methodologies, applied technologies and strengthened relationships with other agencies. You've pioneered many innovative programs that set an example for other municipalities, some of which have been recognized nationally. But most indelibly, you have set an example of excellence for all the police officers and support staff of Orland Park. So look around the room with the command staff and officers I see here tonight, I don't believe I'm going out on a limb on this and I believe that they'll agree with me. So Joe, best of luck to you, all the happiness in, in the world as you enter the next phase. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy. We're not going to hear about your great athleticism again, are we?
There's plenty of time later. The, Joe, thank you for everything you've done. Back when we, when I got elected back in 2019 and first met you, there was a little bit of turmoil going on here in Orland Park and the village turned to you and, you know, watching you go through that, you gave me a lesson in dependability, integrity and fairness. I appreciated that. You rose up when, when these virtues were sorely needed by the village, you stood up and, and did it. Thank you for your service at that time and since then, I've just witnessed your professionalism, you know, from, you know, from morning, noon and night. You've, you've been a true professional and, you know, we know you'll be a success wherever you go with that. So thanks again, Joe, good luck in your new position.
Any other comments? Trustee Katsinas.
Chief, I wanted to say thank you for everything you've done over the course of 27 years, but in particular in the last two years. You came into the chief's job with a legend behind you or in front of you as you were stepping up. What you have done and how you care about people, about your officers, about victims, about protecting the innocent has made a big mark on me and I thank you for that. You are truly a cop's cop. Thank you, Chief.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Milani.
Surprisingly, I'm at a loss for words almost up here. I know you guys are surprised. But Chief Mitchell, you are going to be missed. As I've gotten to know you after the past few years, I realize you're more than just the chief, you're a friend to all of your officers. And you, you have a police family around you and you treat them as one of your own. And I think that is why people respect you so much and why you will be missed so much. The things you've done in the past two years have been tremendous. The criminals realize if they come to Orland Park, they are going to get caught and you will hunt them down and find them. And, you know, we appreciate everything that you have done and we, we hope that your new position understands what they're going to be getting in having a chief like you. So thank you, sir.
Any other comments? I can't say enough about Chief Mitchell's career and his performance as chief. Many of his accomplishments were listed in our proclamation, but that doesn't say nearly enough about what he's meant to the department and the village of Orland Park. There is no bigger leadership challenge than to follow an outstanding leader who is revered by those who leads, who he leads. I remember, do you remember what I said to you? I said, "Chief, you've got some big shoes to fill." And I think your response was, "Thanks for that Captain Obvious." With, with the benefit of hindsight, I can safely say that nobody could have taken the reins and done a better job than Chief Mitchell has done in the last two years. Together, Chief Mitchell, the village board and I have accomplished a lot in spite of operating in Cook County with a catch, who runs a catch and release program through Kim Fox's office. We implemented the mobile response unit that has lowered mental health commitments by 35% and has saved lives. Crime has decreased in 2020 and 2021 to the lowest level in 27 years. We worked with Simon Mall to implement a youth supervision policy which has been incredibly successful with only one incident of theft during youth supervision hours in a full year. The violent crime rate in Orland Park is the lowest for towns over 50,000 in Illinois. Orland Park was named the safest city in Illinois in 2020 and Orland Park was named the eighth safest small city in the United States in 2021. Chief Mitchell, you've led the department through the most trying times that most of us have ever experienced. I think I can safely speak for the village of Orland Park by stating that we will forever be grateful for your outstanding leadership and your efforts during your tenure in Orland Park. As for me, I want to thank you for your leadership over the department and for the example that you set for other department heads. Thank you and I wish you the best in your future endeavors. Chief, I know you want to say a few words, so I'm going to let you say a few words and then we'll give you your proclamation. Just wanted to get in front of the mic one last time.
First off, I want to thank the board, the mayor for your support through the years, this board and the boards before that, the support for the Orland Park Police Department. We could not do what we did without your assistance. I thank you very much. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve this organization as a chief of police and wear this badge every single day. Thank you to the community for giving me this trust and allowing me to implement programs throughout Orland Park that I feel has been very beneficial and effective. But I do want to talk about something here and maybe this ain't the proper time, but I feel it is for me. Mr. Mayor and village trustees, let me be clear, let me be very, very crystal clear on this. As property and violent crime rose to record levels throughout the Chicagoland area, by contrast, crime in the village of Orland Park fell to the lowest numbers of index crimes in 27 years. That's a fact. With an overall decrease of 9.2% when compared to 2020 crime statistics, all occurring under my watch, violent crime also fell by 24% with no homicide or rape incidents. This is a testament to the hard work and dedication of each member of the Orland Park Police Department and our strong relationship with the private sector and commitment to work collaboratively in protecting persons and businesses against crime. The significant achievement is equally remarkable when considering that in 2020, retail businesses and malls throughout the Orland Park were ordered closed for 10 weeks by a governor's executive order. In 2021, with no mandated closings and continuing to remain open, the incidence of theft still decreased by almost 11%. This discrete, this decrease is directly attributed to joint effort by Simon Properties, the Orland Park Police Department and implementation of the Orland Square Mall Youth Supervision Program, which curbs crime and behavioral misconduct by unaccompanied juveniles at the mall. There were no incidents of retail theft or code of conduct violations during the execution of the first-of-its-kind program in the Simon Properties portfolio. Additional benefits associated with the youth supervision program are that when compared to 2019 data, the 2021 sales receipts at the Orland Square Mall rose by over 3%. And dwell time, or the amount of time that shoppers spend on average inside the mall increased by 5.5%. If the mall were not safe, people would certainly not be staying there and shopping. As in past years, the department's 2021 clearance rates on violent crimes far surpassed that of the FBI calculated national and Midwest clearance rates averages. 100% of our rapes were cleared. Now, we didn't have a rape in 2021, we had one in 2020 and that was solved in 2021. The Midwest average is 30%, the national average is 32.9%. We made arrest, correction, and we made arrests for rape that occurred in prior year, 11, 112.5% clearance on robberies, another 91% clearance on aggravated assault. Again, these were far exceeding Midwest and national averages. Additionally, as further evidence of outstanding proactive work of the men and women of the police department, the website Money Geek analyzed crime statistics by quantifying the cost of crime and ranking small cities and small towns across the entire nation determined the village of Orland Park was the eighth safest small town in the United States. So why am I saying this? Because I'm constantly hearing rhetoric, political rhetoric and campaign videos that the Orland Park arrests are at an all-time low, but crime is out of control. I want to set the record straight. Ladies and gentlemen, do not feed into this nonsense of the lies that are perpetrated by a person seeking elected office who makes campaign attack ads and videos with previously convicted felons. The men and women in the Orland Park Police Department are committed to safeguarding the citizens' businesses from crime. Our record speaks for itself, Mr. Mayor and the board. Moreover, to insinuate or say otherwise flies in the face of reality and affronts the hard work that men and women do on a daily basis for the village of Orland Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I'm hoping, hoping Mrs. Healy got a chance to edit this so there's no errors. The good news is you're going to have, hanging on your wall, you'll have my signature, so good for you.
Accounts payable approval?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Healy.
I move to approve the accounts payable from March 8, 2022 through March 21, 2022 in the amount of $5,6475.55.
Second. Call or roll?
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas. Trustee Milani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pecov.
Aye.
Payroll approval.
We already did that.
Consent.
Yeah, consent agenda is what we're doing. So consent agenda, item A, payroll approval. Item B, LaGrange Square Amendment to, amendment to a special use permit with modifications, site plan elevations and landscape plan. Item C, LaGrange Square Amendment to, ordinance granting a second amendment to the LaGrange Square Special Use Key Development Partners, 45 Orland Square Drive. Item D, ITB 22-014 Generator Transfer Switch and UPS Maintenance Rejection. Item E, Granicus three-year contract extension for GovAccess Communications Cloud, Legastar Insight Government Transparency Suite and Granicus Encoding Appliance Software Renewal Subscriptions. Item F, Fire Hydrant Painting Bit Award. Item G, White &amp; Company Engineering Agreement. I'll entertain a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A through G.
So moved. Second.
Call or roll?
Trustee Milani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecov.
Aye.
Civic Center BAS Upgrade Project Approval to Waive Vids.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to waive the bidding process for the Civic Center BAS Upgrade Project and approve a contract for Automatic Building Controls LLC for an amount not to exceed $70,347.20, which is $63,952 plus a tempered contingency of $6,395.20 and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second. Are there any questions or comments? And George, could you just give us a brief synopsis of why we're waiving the bidding process?
This is a, this is a sole source provider and this, this matches our existing automated systems.
Call or roll?
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Milani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecov.
Aye.
Grasslands Regional Flood Control Wet Basin Dredging Change Order Request.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Healy.
I move to approve a change order authorizing additional funding for silt dredging and related work at the Grasslands Regional Flood Control Facility Proposal from Schwartz Construction Group, Inc. of Countryside, Illinois in an amount not to exceed $112,746.66 and authorize the village manager to execute said change order subject to village attorney review.
Second. So a brief summary here, we have to dredge this and we've had sediment going with all of the, all the constructions going on. Also, that pond's been there for a long time, so it's sediment from the past as well, not just from this construction, correct?
Yes.
Any questions, comments? Call or roll?
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Milani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecov.
Aye.
Zoning Map Update Ordinance.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance Approving the Publication of an Updated Zoning District Map."
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call or roll?
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Milani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecov.
Aye.
ITB Number 22-011 Baseball
So, just so that everybody knows, we had budgeted for this, to do field startups, and the bids came back, if I'm not mistaken, they came back much higher than we expected. So what we decided to do was to use the budgeted amount to do some of our fields. We'll do the rest in-house, and then we'll kind of evaluate how that went for next year. That way, we won't exceed our budget, and we'll get a feel for if this is a better way to go going forward. Is that fair enough? Is that a fair, accurate description? Okay. Any comments?
Call or roll?
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Any non-scheduled citizen visitors?
Any non-scheduled visitors to speak? All right. Board comments. Trustee Reardon.
Welcome to our new staff members, HR, and you're sorely needed, and we're glad you're here, and we look forward to working with you all. The chief is gone, but I wanted to, again, personally, oh, there, he's back. No, he's not back. Interim Chief Rossi, good luck. We're looking forward to working with you as well. That's all I have. Thanks.
Trustee Healy.
I once again want to say thank you to Kendall and Michael Schofield for showing up today to accept this award. They're what a great couple, and they are just perfect ambassadors for the Village of Orland. So, thanks again to them, and that's all I have to say.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Hey, it's me. I also wanted to say congratulations to Kendall and also best of luck to the chief. Also, wanted to say thank you to all of the volunteers and people who donated for our event that we had this past Saturday, raising money, and donations for the refugees, the Ukrainian refugees. Thank you to everybody and the corporate sponsors who donated money to help ship that stuff. I mean, there were some people who were there all day. I was there for a couple of hours. There were people who were there all day. And also, a big thank you to everybody at the village who had to scramble and put all of this together. And I planned a lot of events in my day, and it was very, very well done, very well coordinated. I mean, you guys were all on point, so thank you to everybody. Your hard work is deeply appreciated, and I'm sure the 3 million refugees, who are women and children, definitely value it as well. I'm proud to say that I live in Orland Park and work with such wonderful people.
Trustee Katsinas.
Just to continue what Trustee Radiszewski said, we had over 100 volunteers. We had streams of cars coming to the village hall. We had kids walking into the village hall wanting to help. George was collecting stuff. Keith was putting boxes in. Nabea did an outstanding job promoting the event, but really, at the end of the day, the community came through to load a semi-trailer full of supplies for refugees, women, and children. It really restores your faith in humans. It really does. Out of bad comes some good, and this was the good. It was beautiful. So, thank you to everyone who's donated, money and items. Thank you also to all of the volunteers, including staff that helped out, that gave up their time, and some staff members' kids. Thank you. And thank you to the corporate sponsors. They were a very big part of this event. They include Darwin, Max Packing, Home Depot, Transportation Equipment, TH Ryan Cardage, Dunkin' Donuts on LaGrange Road, Jewel and Osko on 159th Street, Costco here in Orland, One-Up Sign, Crossmark Printing, Warehouse Direct Workplace, the Orland Park Bakery, and then we had also a shipper, Doma, also gave of their services to the village. So, it was just a wonderful event. But also, lastly, to thank George and all of our staff, who because of your planning and efforts, really brought everything together. So it was a wonderful event, and just a wonderful community event for people and for families for such an amazing cause. So, thank you.
Trustee Malani.
Well, tonight, we heard about two people following their dreams. Kendall Coyne Schofield, bringing back the silver medal here to Orland Park, and departure of Chief Mitchell as he continues on in his career. Wish them both the best. And it was great to hear his reminder of why Orland Park is the safest city in Illinois and the eighth safest city in the United States. And we have a great police department here, and we couldn't do it without them. A couple of things that are coming up in the village, the Lucky Egg Hunt is coming on April 9 this year, and also, the week of April 11, the Waste Management will be having their spring cleanup event. So if you have those refrigerators and large things that they won't pick up on a normal day, just make sure you get those out to your curb, and they'll happily assist you on that week. So, thank you all for coming, and have a great night.
Trustee Compass.
So I'm going to triple down on what Trustee Radiszewski and Trustee Katsinas already mentioned. I don't believe it can be overstated. This past Saturday, the weather may have been cold and rainy, but the amount of love and support for Ukrainian refugees was more than adequate to keep our volunteers warm throughout the day. The word "awesome" gets overused in our culture, but in the truest sense of the denotation, what I witnessed on Saturday was awesome. We put out word on Tuesday that the village would be collecting needed supplies and aid for refugees that have thankfully made their way to Poland. By Saturday, this hall was so full of generous donations that had we gotten a 48-foot semi-trailer, we would have needed another. Collecting, sorting, and packing those goods seemed overwhelming in the morning, but thanks to a large and steady flow of volunteers throughout the day, this village came together and got it done. The amount of love and generous support for victims of senseless violence half a world away was amazing to behold. It's even more incredible when you consider how we are all paying more for everyday items here at home, and still that happened. I feel tremendously blessed to have witnessed this. Thank you to everyone in this village who was involved. It was just amazing. Saturday was a great day. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I also want to welcome the staff members. All of our board meetings are quick like this, and I'll feel good. What a great board meeting. Tonight, we got to see and hear the best about America. Kendall Coyne Schofield, a multiple gold medal winner and a silver medal winner in the most recent Olympics, who has represented the United States with class for over a decade and is homegrown from here in Orland Park. Chief Joe Mitchell, who spent over a quarter of a century in service to the Village of Orland Park, and he's the type of leader that is found throughout America, year after year and decade after decade. Then on Saturday, we saw America at its best at the Saturday collection event. I want to thank the volunteers and donors on Saturday that made our event to collect needed items for Ukrainian refugees a phenomenal success. As Trustee Compass mentioned, we collected enough to almost entirely fill a 53-foot trailer that will be to the refugees in about a week. I also want to thank all the staff that volunteered, many of whom stayed the entire day to help make this happen. So, thank you so much. Also, I had the list of donors. I think there might have been a few that she missed, and I'm going to throw those in if she did mention them. They get mentioned twice. Jimmy John's at LaGrange, Lowe's for boxes, Transportation Equipment, Inc., and TH Ryan Cardage Company with logistical assistance for the truck. Also, cash donations. I know Darwin Furniture was mentioned for the $2,500. Also, we got $1,000 from Bob Walsh, who's a resident, Paul Shaheen from Horton Insurance, $250, many other donations totaling $11,696. But the most incredible one, Luke Cudney, age 11, with a donation of $345 that was helped by his brothers, who were ages five and nine. They made pottery and sold it in their neighborhood and raised $345 and brought it all here to donate. That just speaks. It is so humbling to see that even in the difficult times with high gas and grocery prices, high crime, and a lot of uncertainty, that the people of Orland Park stepped up. I believe the generosity of the people of Orland Park that we saw this weekend represents the generosity of America, and the American people are the most giving people on the planet and have an amazing capacity to help others. So, I was proud of Orland Park. I was proud to be an American. It was a phenomenal weekend, and it was a phenomenal night, and it's great to have a board meeting like this where we get to celebrate that. So, thank you all. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to go into executive session for (a) approval of minutes, (b) the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performances, or dismissal of specific village employees, (c) setting a price for sale or lease of village property, (d) pending litigation against affecting or on behalf of the village or when found by the board that such action is probable or imminent.
Second. Call or roll?
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Here.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to approve releasing for public inspection the executive session minutes from January 2021 through June 2021, except for portions thereof that are determined to be necessary to be kept confidential to protect the public interest or the privacy of an individual.
Second. Call or roll?
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding and settlement agreement by and between the Village of Orland Park, the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 399, and Stacy Rafferty.
Second. Call or roll?
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.